Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 11th, 2009 zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that all members are present. This time, I'd like to open the floor to anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda. Please come forward and you'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Public comment period is closed. Acceptance of the minutes from the January 14th meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Michael Marshon made a motion to accept. Bob seconded. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number five, public hearing to consider the following rezoning case. Zoning review ID 1977.08, tract A2A2 of the industrial material concrete property for Marion Cove Enterprises LLC. Mr. Lambert.
Hello. My name is Jake Lambert, an engineer with Glenn Shaheen &amp; Associates, representing my client, Marion Cove. Just to give you all a little bit of background on this piece of property, it's about nine and a half acres, fronts on Airline Highway. On that Airline Highway frontage, there's a ground lease with AutoZone that's part of this parcel. To the north is Ascension Marine and the whole Commerce Lane, commercial park development. To the south along Airline is Frank's Restaurant and also Capital Concrete Companies. This site has been a concrete plant, concrete yard for at least 20 or 30 years now, and my client owns what's indicated on the map in front of you as the Prairieville Store All. It's called A Store All, and this property adjoins her storage facility. She purchased this parcel and intends to expand her mini-storage development onto some of this parcel. In the process of beginning the planning of this development, we consulted with the parish to go through, make sure we were following the right process and procedure, and it was discovered that this property has a dual zoning according to the parish zoning map. The frontage along Airline Highway is a mixed-use zoning, and the rear of the property is a medium-density residential. And so, at the advice of some of the people at the parish, they recommended that, just as a matter of clarification and formality, that we come before you guys and ask to have the property, one, consistent zoning. So, we're seeking to get the rear of this property consistent with the front of the property to mixed-use zoning.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
Lance, should this be classified as MU1 or MU2?
It would be MU, just MU. Classification, airline and all the property that's in the front is MU also.
Okay, so that is not going to be...
Did we keep plain MU?
Yes, ma'am.
We did keep it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Are you all going to be occupying from Airline all the way to the rear of the property with the storage?
We are still working on the final layout of her expansion.
But the concrete company is...
The concrete company is gone, yes, sir. The site right now is covered basically with the remains of the concrete, aggregate crushed concrete, you know, and there's going to be some site grading, and we're still developing the layout for the mini-storage, and she's got some market analysis going on to determine the extent of her expansion and weigh in some of our options.
Are you all going to connect the two facilities, the other...
We intend to, yes, sir.
Mr. Lambert, this is not the concrete place that's existing, still manufacturing, still operating?
No, ma'am. It's adjacent to that.
Okay.
In between this parcel and the capital companies, which I think in the rear connects, which on this map in front of you...
Jake, if you would, put it up, just kind of put it up on that little overhead if you don't mind.
Can y'all see that? Okay. This here, according to the tax assessors' map, says East Ascension Telephone Company now formerly, but I believe that now this capital company owns it. So, in the rear, it's adjoined by the concrete company, and here is Frank's Restaurant, the other joint land owned. All of these on the north side of the property are commercial businesses. You've got Ascension Marine, obviously her mini-storage facility, and some other industrial commercial businesses.
Okay. Thank any other comments, questions at this time? Okay. I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this property, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak.
It's got some commercial.
No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Lambert, yeah, come on back up.
I just want to let the commissioners know that this is one of those areas that in the zoning subcommittee we've studied and we looked into, and you're going to be looking at the maps that were handed out earlier in a public hearing later, and this is one of those areas where we're going to recommend that we rezone a lot of these properties that are residential as MU because their uses today are MU uses, they're permitting MU uses. We need to just correct the map. More map correction than anything else at all.
Julio, that's including that area that's definitely MU, uses MU to the north of the property?
Correct, sir.
Or cross, I think cross manufacturing is back up in there somewhere.
Correct, sir. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the parish council for the rezoning to the MU district.
I'll second. Motion by Julio Domas to approve rezoning, seconded Buddy Well. Any opposition? Motion carries. Now, this will go to council for approval also.
Thank you, Alan.
Item number 5B, cross-connection of commercial parcels.
Is this, excuse me, is this up for public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, point of order. There was never any motion made by this commission to hold a public hearing. Recommendations from subcommittee are voted on by the full commission to go forward with a public hearing. That never happened. It was the December meeting it was brought up, and there was no motion requested by the chairman of the zoning subcommittee and no motion entertained by the commission chairman.
On the cross-connection?
On either.
On either? The historical site and the cross?
Both.
Okay. When you say either. Lance?
So, right now, who, staff, who directed you to go ahead and advertise for public hearing? Because that's part of the reason why the motion is made by the full commission to proceed.
It was done in the December meeting. I'd have to go back and look, but I thought that it stated that we'd have public hearing, and I missed the January meeting to put it on, so I put it on this meeting.
My recollection concerned, in fact, that the reason why it wasn't on last month's meetings because they misadvertised it, but we actually, it was done in the December meeting.
Correct. You brought up the items, but we received, but there was no motion made by the full commission or anyone, and voted on by the full commission to proceed, and it might have been because we didn't receive anything at that time in writing. We didn't know what we were going to be discussing, moving forward on. So, no motion was made, and the commission did not vote to hold public hearings.
Staff?
I thought it was to put on for a public hearing, and I had to look back at the minutes.
You don't have the minutes.
I don't have the minutes, no, sir, but I know what...
Legal? It was advertised.
No, I think Mike's correct. I don't think you asked for public hearing. I don't, I really don't even think you brought it up.
Yeah, no, we didn't. Who brought it up?
I have a clip that Lester has in the control room, but unfortunately, it doesn't match up, so it won't play right now.
All right.
Yes, the clip of the December meeting.
All right, so then, in the interest of being accurate, let me then, if I may, take the opportunity to explain the two items that are before you and ask you for motion to put both items next month for public hearing. The first item is to amend the cross-connection, the commercial parcels, to require that they interconnect with each other, the parking lots, to eliminate, to internalize the traffic and hopefully minimize the number of driveway cuts on the roads and help internalize the traffic and reduce traffic on the roads. Pretty straightforward, simple addition to Section 1702. It's a new provision of the ordinance, of the zoning ordinance.
And I think DOT is kind of leaning that way, too, to where if you were to get a driveway permit, they would encourage connectivity.
Oh, it makes sense, absolutely.
The second item, the historic overlay district currently regulates what happens outside the historic site. But does, and there's a lot of, it's very permissive as to what can happen on the property. The intent here is to regulate what happens on the property, doesn't alter or affect what happens to surrounding parcels. The intent here is to regulate what happens into property, limit what is in fact permissible on the property, and tie it to performance standards, i.e. minimum parking requirements, you know, landscaping and things like that, you know, provisions that currently don't exist in the ordinance. So, the intent is to bring it, you know, into more of a regulated environment than it currently is because it's very open and permissive. That's the intent of both of the items.
On this historical site overlay, has someone approached you all, or the committee, or anyone, that some of these things need to be changed or revised?
There is currently activity going on on two other historic sites where they've come in and applied for permits and have obtained occupational licenses and to open restaurants and things like that, and there's no way to say no, but, and there's no regulations for them, so we're hoping to start capturing that and regulate it and make sure that we have adequate parking and landscaping and things like that.
But at the same time, though, shouldn't the underlying zoning handle some of that issue? Because at the same time, back in 2006, we had a historical site property owner approach the commission with a planned unit development concept. We had a special workshop meeting pertaining to this. There was not one commissioner at that time that was opposed to the concept.
Correct.
But there were certain points that they were vague on. We and staff required more information. The applicant nor the applicant's designee ever submitted that information.
I don't even know what happened in that application, but that's not, that's what's driving this.
But at the same time, we already have, so to speak, a mechanism in place where these individuals can bring a spud or a pud concept before the commission. Had the applicant followed through with that, I believe the commission would have approved it and sent the recommendation of approval to the council, and the council would have approved it, and the applicant would be doing business today.
And you know what? I don't know that we're adding, permitting, permitting anything that isn't already permitted. All we're saying is, is we need to regulate them. We're not changing anything that they can already do. They're already, they can already add a restaurant, they can already do their bed and breakfast, they can already do these reception halls and things like that. All we're saying is, we need to regulate them. That's all intent of this amendment. Now, you know, all I'm asking is that we go to a public hearing.
And that's the purpose of the subcommittees, to bring it to us so we can have public hearing and we can discuss it?
Correct.
So, are you ready for a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we bring both of these items up for public hearing at the next meeting.
No, 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 no. One at a time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we bring up the cross-connection of commercial parcels for public hearing next month.
Second.
Motion by Sheri to have a public hearing next month on the cross-connection of commercial parcels, seconded by Paige Becknell.
And then I'll make a motion that we...
Anyway, any opposition? Motion carries?
Sorry.
Now, Sheri.
Then I'll make a motion that we bring up the historical site overlays for public hearing next month.
Certainly.
Motion by Sheri Sloman, object carrying for the overlay zone, seconded by Paige.
Yes.
Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Michael Marshon, any others?
Object.
All right. Michael and Bob, motion carries. Item six, zoning subcommittee, zoning map revisions. I want to introduce Ricky.
Let me, if I may, I'm going to turn it over to Lance and, I mean...
Lance can do it to me.
To Ricky and Lance and have them give us a brief presentation of the zoning maps that we've been working on for quite some time, a long time.
Thank you. When I came on board, we had a lot of projects that were in sort of a state of flux, and as I ran through the ordinance, I found a lot of things that we could look at and address, and, you know, the cross-connection is just one of those. But the zoning maps is a project that was started a couple of years ago, and when I got to my office, there was a big roll of drawings that had some chicken scratch on it, and a lot of thought had gone into them, but that's pretty much where the thought stopped, was on that paper. And so, over the last two months or so, Lance and I, with the zoning subcommittee, have gotten together and started looking at the zoning map and figuring out how we can make it better. And we're trying to accomplish several goals. The first goal is, we've got a lot of properties, like we saw tonight, that are divided amongst multiple zoning categories, and if we can take our zoning map that originally was just drawn as an idea, they would take a stripe of zoning and just put it over a road based on a width, irregardless of what the parcel lines were. And now that we've been doing it for a while, we know that's probably not the best way to draw a zoning map. So, we've gone through, we've looked at every single parcel and analyzed whether or not it should be zoning category one or two. You know, whatever the zoning is, does it meet the 51% rule? Should it be this or that? We've eliminated probably 95% of those parcels that have that 51% rule. That other 5% are parcels that have a commercial frontage, but they don't meet the 51% rule, and we didn't think it was fair for us to rezone them to something that wasn't commercial, so we kept them with that commercial frontage and we kept whatever their rear zoning was. We've eliminated so many parcels that just had a 50/50 split one way or the other and made a determination of what that should be. The second thing that we were trying to do was, we've gotten our MU2, thanks to the work of this commission and the work of my staff, MU2 is now approved through the council. We've got another commercial zoning category that we can introduce to the parish, and what we wanted to do was look at the zoning map and analyze, where does MU2 make sense? It's not just those properties that we did through this commission that front on 73, but back to Airline. It's not just the properties that have come before you and you guys have asked them to wait because it makes sense to be MU2 and not MU or not crossroads commercial. So, not just those parcels, but where else in the parish does MU2 make sense? So, we've looked at some corridors, and I'm going to show you the maps, but we've tried to introduce MU2 into places that make sense. And the third thing we've tried to do is make our zoning map more in line with our transportation network. We've got zoning categories in places that just don't make sense because the roads cannot support if those parcels get developed at full buildout. So, running through the maps pretty quickly because you just can't see them that well on this map, but I'd like to tell anybody watching, come to my office. I'll sit down with you and I'll talk about the map, I'll talk about your parcels. Every one of these commissioners have a copy of that map. Ask them a question, they'll show it to you. The council members next Thursday are going to get copies of this map. We're going to do this two or three more times with this commission and with strategic planning. We want this map to be out there so people can see it, react to it, and if they want to make changes, we're going to make changes to it. The second slide reflects the overall parish map, and what you'll see is, you'll see a maroon color sort of sprinkled through the northern part of the parish, and that maroon color is our MU2. What we've done is we've looked at Highway 42 and Highway 44, and we've said, where it's not a crossroads, it shouldn't be crossroads commercial. We would rather those parcels develop as our small-scale residential scale commercial and office, little office parks, little business parks. So, it's still commercial in designation, but if you're not at a crossroads, you should not be crossroads commercial. That's our most intense, you know, smaller, not mixed-use, not Airline Highway commercial. You'll see that runs down 42 and down 44. There's a big triangle, that's where 73 hits the interstate. That before was, I believe, petition properties on the map before, you just can't see it. But we decided to make that call. That should be developed as a office park or small-scale commercial. We've cleaned up a lot of the little crossroads commercial out on the eastern side of the property. We've cleaned up where the residential medium stops on 42. It now stops at a logical point. There was a development of small lots, and that conservation was over that and residential, so there was some confusion as to why it stopped where it did. The next slide moves down the parish a little bit, and what you'll see is a heavy blue line, and that blue line covers parts of the parish where development really hasn't come into yet. Our approved Riverton development is that sort of slashing yellowish-brown color, but essentially what we've done is we've defined three areas. West of the river, sort of north of Donaldsonville, east of the river, around the Riverton, all that green area that's surrounded by the line, and then, once again, west of the river on that little red point and the blue that's surrounding it. And we're calling that our spud pud T&amp;D overlay zone, and we're still in the process of defining what that means, but in our heads, what it means is, if you're going to develop in this area, in these areas, we want you to develop at a higher standard. We've got to draft the overlay in such a way that people are still allowed to do their family partitions, they're still allowed to do their simple divisions. We're not trying to preclude that from happening, but we don't want development coming in and taking large tracts of land and creating just track development. We'd rather to see a pud or a T&amp;D or some sort of a higher-end development that makes sense out in these areas because when we get to a point where we're building a parish sewer system, or we're starting to improve roads, we need to know that development is going to be there at a higher standard than where it could be today. So, I just ask that we look at this map, we study this map, and we come back next month for a public hearing, and we've gotten as much public opinion on it that we can get. And once again, if there's an outcry over something that I've done, you know, we'll pull it back and we'll keep working on it because this may not be the end-all, be-all, but I think it's a good step because as we get into the master plan process, we need a zoning map that makes sense because we may develop standards through that process that our old zoning map doesn't meet, maybe that this map doesn't meet, but I'd love to be a little bit further down the road to a zoning map that makes sense when we do get there.
Very good. Any questions, comments this time? We definitely want to thank Ricky for all his hard work and making his positive step.
Ricky, are we going to have any, like, town hall meetings? Because there's a couple of these areas that, there's going to be some residences that are going to be affected by it, or is it strictly going to be council-type meetings?
We hadn't made plans to do town hall type meetings. Where I was coming from is, I didn't think we made any whole-scale changes that negatively impacted any residential areas. We were changing some crossroads to mixed-use, too, but based on the...
That wasn't what I was talking about. We got lambasted by a resident about this commission, and his property is, one of these is going to be affected by it, and I think it would behoove us to possibly, in some areas, and I'll get with you later, to have a town hall meeting in a couple of spots.
Okay.
I guess the other report that we want to make is that there were total 17 applicants for the RFQ, for the master plan, and after, you know, review with the administration and what have you, it was narrowed down to four candidates that will now be asked to respond to a formal proposal. And those four candidates are going to be EDO, who is out of Atlanta, Winston &amp; Associates, who's out of Boulder, Colorado, PB Brown Daines, which is out of New Orleans, and Wallace Robertson Todd, who is out of Miami, Florida. The 17 candidates came from a cross-section of the United States. We had an enormous amount of national attention towards the RFP to do the master plan. The RFP will go out, I think, Friday, right? And then they have 30 days to respond, and then there'll be public presentations that they will have to make roughly two weeks after that, two to three weeks after that.
It's our goal that when we get the RFP back and we've reviewed them, that we choose a location, and I'm going to throw Lamar Dixon out there because it's big, and hopefully we get a lot of response from citizens that they are interested in how this process is going to work, but I want to meet at Lamar Dixon, I want to get it on TV, and any citizens that participate, we're going to take comment cards from them, and those comment cards will be weighted in the selection process.
The next subdivision committee is going to be, zoning subcommittee meeting is going to be next Thursday at 8:30 in the morning with staff.
Do you have regular zoning committee meetings? Is it monthly? Or you just at random pick a date?
We haven't been doing them very regularly because we've been trying to struggle through this mapping process for a long, long, long time, and it's been very difficult to get through this mapping process because we depend on an awful lot of departments in the parish, so, you know, sometimes we work on them very hard and then we have to wait for the maps to come so we can work on them some more. But now that we're through with that, we'll be going back to a regular recurring meeting.
Monthly?
Monthly, yes.
And do you advertise them? Right. We've been watching and... I've been watching for months now, and I've never seen them.
I don't know that they, do we need to advertise some stuff?
We have in the past, yes, sir. And that's my next question. If it's going to be that next week or whatever, I don't know if we meet any...
You don't have time to advertise now.
No. If that's the case, then you shouldn't be holding it. It's supposed to be advertised.
Oh, in that case, we'll postpone it then for another week until after, Thursday after Monte Gras so we can advertise it.
Okay. Don't you have to advertise more than once?
No, ma'am. I don't think we need to advertise.
Once, only once for a committee meeting?
Right, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And do you, one of my, I think, do you have, does the chairman appoint a chairperson for the committee and then the chairperson picks commissioners or asks commissioners to attend or what? How does that work?
Commissioners are basically appointed by me, I mean, and then they attend it and elect the chairman.
So, anybody can go?
Anybody?
You know, one of the commissioners just asked me to take a comment, and I'm like, absolutely, didn't come.
And I think...
And if you want to serve, we'd love to have you.
Absolutely. And I don't know if there's a limit on how many members we have.
That's what I was warning you.
Four.
Can't we have four? So, you know, I think there's two openings, two vacancies.
Three. One, he just volunteered earlier.
So, there are one less.
We got one volunteer, one slot. You want to come, everybody?
No, I don't. I'd like to come sometimes, you know, but not on a regular basis.
Absolutely.
Alan?
Yes.
So, we don't have an issue next month? Can we have a vote on the zoning map being brought up for public hearing next month?
I'd like to make that motion.
Actually, I'd like to offer a substitute motion that it be deferred for 90 days to allow for town hall meetings to be held, to get public input on this map at the same time, to get, inform people about the master plan process it's going to be taking, and then it come back to the commission with that information for us to review and decide whether or not to hold public hearing.
And, you know, while we're going through this master plan process, we will have numerous town hall meetings. I can promise you that, and we encourage those. We'll have it probably in every council district. We'll have it probably in every council district, and it's a very intense process we're going to go through, so we can maybe absolutely do it concurrently or whatever.
I think there's no time like the present to start talking with people, and I think that these town hall meetings would be an excellent way to start.
Well, since there's not a, I haven't heard a second on either motion, have I?
I second the original motion.
You did?
Well, I just did. People were talking afterwards. All right, we had no, like I say, Michael's had a substitute motion and then...
What was the original motion again?
The original motion is to schedule for a public hearing.
Okay.
Right. And then, so... What staff requested? That's what it was. Right, so I mean...
I second his motion then.
Okay, I think, point of order, it goes to substitute motion, and then we vote on then if it goes back to the first motion. So, we have a second on the substitute motion to defer it for 90 days while we have some town hall meetings. All in favor?
Which, which one?
This is a substitute motion to defer for 90 days. I have, was it Michael, Buddy, and Bob, or Yays?
Yes.
And Nays would be Sheri, Paige, Nate, Michael, Steve, and Beverly, Nate. Motion fails. Go with the original motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow, to have a public hearing next month on the zoning maps?
No.
All opposed. Michael. Any other opposition? Buddy, no. No?
No, I'm voting for it this time.
Okay. So, Nays are Michael and Buddy. Any other opposition? Motion carries.
Vote to adjourn.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn, seconded, we are adjourned. For another 10 minutes, we'll convene as a joint planning and zoning.